Ask the clerk to take role, please.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Fantasy is excused. Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor McDonald. Counselor Missolia. Counselor Finsland.
Here.
Counselor Herrick.
Here.
Counselor McKenzie.
Here.
Counselor Dobek.
Here.
And youth counselors, Noiki. And Kadat.
This time I have proclamation to make. I'll ask Counselor McKenzie to come forward at this time.
And before I make this presentation, a couple of words I wanted to say. As many of you know, Mick and I have been best friends since 7th grade and I wouldn't have got elected in the 2008 election if it wasn't for Mick's help. And so tonight, it's kind of bittersweet for me because Mick is moving on and many of us wish he would have run again, but that was his choice. So I guess I can say, besides reading the proclamation that's here, I guess all I can say is I wish him good luck and Godspeed. And we'll still talk every day or every other day on the phone. So anyway, I'll read this presentation at this time. It says, "Presented to Mick McKenzie, City Councilor, 9th District, April 2008 through April 2014 in appreciation of your hard work and dedication to the constituents in your district and the committees you've served on for the betterment of this community, specifically Golf Course Committee, Human Resources Committee, Library Board, Plan Commission, Public Safety Committee, and Public Works Committee. Also, for your passion and endless hours you put into the animal shelter project." And it's signed by Bruce Hagan and the members of the common council. So I'll present this to you.
And hopefully you want to say a couple of words.
Well, after that, I think I'm speechless.
Never happens with me.
Actually, actually, I do have a speech. It's not, it's not long, though. But I always, I always hated being the leadoff hitter, though. Excuse me for having to read. I would describe the past six years as an exciting and emotional roller coaster ride of ups and downs. And fortunately for me, it has consisted of many more highs than lows with an opportunity to meet hundreds of wonderful people who generally care about our city. My time on the council also offered me the chance to gain from many of you some of the knowledge it takes to not just only strive to be a good representative of my district and Superior, but to truly understand the inner workings of our government. To all of you who work at City Hall and shared your wisdom with me, I say thank you very much. To my fellow city councillors, past and present, who sincerely worked with me and took the time to get to know me better and allowed me to do the same for you, I am truly grateful. Not just for being good colleagues, but for being great friends. A special thanks and remembrance goes out to former councillor and my good friend Bob Brown, who passed away last year. My heartfelt thank you goes out to the residents of the 9th District for working with and believing in me since 2008. I will not soon forget your appreciation and recognition for what we accomplished together and how you helped me learn so much about myself during the process. Many of you know that my brother Donnie died from cancer back in June of 2010. Therefore, I would like to dedicate all my time here on the council to his memory because he was the one who encouraged me, as my big brother, to always work hard and stand up for what I believe in, no matter what the odds. For me, his philosophy has always paid off big dividends, especially during these past few weeks. Thank you, my brother. Finally, I want to sum this all up with a story I recently heard about 32-year-old Army Staff Sergeant Corey Rimsburg. He received critical and life-changing injuries while serving our country in Afghanistan. When asked in a national interview if he still felt like it was all worth it and would he do it all over again in spite of all the terrible injuries, without hesitation and as clearly as he could, he simply said, "Hands down." And so, if you were to ask me if I would do this all over again and was it all worth it, like Corey, my answer would always be a resounding, "Hands down." And so, with that said, and because I always, always have disliked goodbyes, I just want to say, "Good luck to everyone and thanks for all that you have done for me." It truly has been a life-changing experience and a great ride. I hope to see many of you again real soon, whether you like it or not. Thank you, thank you all so much, very, very much. Thank you.
Counselor Olson?
Well Mick, I don't have a speech or anything, but I just want to thank you for the time that we've gotten to know each other in the last six years. I want to thank you for the passion that you've had for everything that you've done for this council. I want to thank your wife for allowing you to run two more times than what you wanted to. But also, it's the friendship that we've, we've gained and the times that we've spent together trying to figure out problems. Whether we thought they were right or whether we thought they were wrong. It takes a great human being to do what you've done, the passion that you've had for this animal shelter deal. You're going to be on a committee with myself and Tom Fantasy and others to make this a reality because there's a lot of you in the group out there that have counted on Mick to do what needed to be done. And sometimes that's a real challenge for us. It's a challenge for the administration as well to get along with us when our, you know, our ideas may not be the same or at the end of the day, we may not agree on things, but at the end of every problem that I think that we've had or every goal that we've set out, we've all seemed to come together. And I want to wish you the best of luck. We know how this all started and I know that if things were a little bit different, that you would continue doing this. And I know that hands down that you've done everything that you wanted to do. And we're going to keep on going and getting that one last thing done for you. So thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for your friendship and your partnership.
Thank you, Dan. That's wonderful. Thank you. Have you seen me any other day?
Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, I just want to thank you very much. And it was a great opportunity to sit next to this man for the last five years and to get to know him even better than what I did before. I mean, I knew him, of course, before he was on the council, but even more so. Working as a great alderman for his district, I know he served his constituents well and worked hard for them. He was always out there taking care of their needs. Also too, I just want to thank him for being the great ambassador he is to our furry little friends out there. Again, Mick, thank you and good luck to you in your future.
Thank you. Any rebuttals? Mick, did you want, did you want to get the last word in? Okay. So let's continue with the meeting.
Item 6 is the consent agenda and there is one correction. It's to item 6.6, the Iraq's committee minutes. And they were handed out tonight.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Item 7.1, Planning Director Cirque is submitting a request from Friends of the Superior Public Library to erect signs in the city right of way for the annual book sale, April 25th and 26th.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
7.2, Planning Director Cirque on behalf of Superior Public Museums is requesting authorization to place signs in the city right of way for the annual garden market, May 14th at the Superior National Guard Armory, one week prior to the event.
All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
8.1, Mayor Hagan is recommending to approve the Animal Shelter Management Contract with the Humane Society of Douglas County for an eight-month period beginning May 1st, 2014. There's also a handout from Finance Director Vito with amended contract.
It's been moved and seconded, but someone has signed up to speak to the issue, so.
Marcy Barbie.
Okay. Hi, I'm Marcy Barbie. I won't take more than a minute or so. I'm the treasurer from HSDC. Been on the board for about 12 years. I just want to tell everyone that we are pleased to be working with the city now. We've been going down this road for a few years and it looks like we've got a conclusion coming soon. We are all working overtime and triple time right now, trying to get everything in order so we can start May 1st, a fresh start and kind of using both of our buildings right now in two different capacities a little bit for a good leeway until hopefully we're in the new shelter in about a year. We are always available for questions, you know, from anyone, city, county, you know, public. And so I just wanted to say, "Thanks for trusting us with the animals of the city" and we will give it 110% to make sure they are well taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, apparently we skipped item 1 before.
Yep, we skipped something on the, on the agenda.
Item 4 is approval of the March 18th regular council meeting minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Now, back to 8.1. Yes, it's been moved and seconded. And Counselor McKenzie would like to speak.
Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation to Humane Society of Douglas County and everybody who is involved with this. We're so hard. This is quite a task, you know, for you to take on. But this really ensures that this project is going to move forward now. I look forward to continuing forward with everybody. There's so many people. We've got, we've got a committee coming up now. That'll be next. That'll be approved by the council, I believe. A good, a good committee to study this building and to make sure that the design is a functional one, a beautiful one. And that everybody is certainly going to be proud of. I know, I know at the end of the day that, you know, this location and all that this thing stands for is something that everybody is going to look at and realize that the people of the Superior supported this thing and wanted this thing. And this is a testament to what you can do when, when the people come out and really show their support for something. So thank you. And again, thank you so much to Humane Society of Douglas County for stepping up to the plate. I always hated being the leadoff hitter, but you stepped up to the plate. So thank you very much. Thank you to everybody.
You're here. Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you. I just have a few questions and my first one, has there been or will there be, and some of this may be, my question may be premature, is there going to be a transition team between the existing operation and the new operation?
Who would like to field that question?
I'll give a shot.
Thank you.
I'm absolutely certain that we will have a transition team. Just at the last council meeting, we got the, kind of the marching orders in four different directions. One was to do a real quick turnaround in negotiating a contract with HSDC. And then the second was to kind of reform the Design Committee, I think we're calling it. Mick, Dan, Tom Fantasy, or just a few of those members. And then also we have the goal of having this project bid out in July. And so I know that we want to have construction happening as soon as possible. So I'm absolutely certain that we'll be having a team that works on the transition of moving from current shelter to future shelter.
Okay. In the contract I saw, where it showed that the hours will be, they weren't specific in terms of the hours. Is there going to be specific hours in the operation? It kind of left a loose and that's fine if we're going to solidify that. Maybe, again, that question may be premature.
No, there, there are definitely specific hours for the current, or the contract that we're discussing tonight. If one of the HSDC representatives wants to come up back to the podium and maybe give those specific hours?
Thanks. Hi again. Jean, correct me if we're wrong because we went back and forth on a few things. For the city facility, we are not going to be an adoption center and only in extreme cases we'll be doing surrender. So it's mostly just an intake where people can come back and and get their animals if they've been lost. And so we're looking at having like a morning crew, like a 7 to 10 type of thing, and then like a 3 to 6. So we will keep, so it'll actually be, we'll be open as late as, as the current facility is now, but we're also wanting to add in some morning hours for people, you know, before work. And that is open if we, moving forward, that's just kind of our starting point. You know, this is a new, a new venture, you know, at that location. But that's, that's what we're thinking for now.
Couple more? Good. That's, that's an open door to me. I know we have to be, they have to be a 501(c)(3). Do we know or do we, are they in good standing as a 501(c)(3)?
Yes, we have already checked on that and the answer is yes.
Workman's comp, we have to, you have to provide workman's comp. Now, that probably isn't any relationship with the, with the city because you're own employees, but I see you have volunteers that work there. How are they covered if they're hurt on, at the site?
We do have a current workman's comp insurance, obviously, at the county facility. We've already contacted our agent about, you know, he knows about this new location. I believe that anyone in the building that is, you know, volunteering for us would be covered under that policy.
So a volunteer is covered under workman's comp policy? Is that what I hear you say?
I would have to check with our agent, but, and as far as the city facility, that won't really be an issue because the animals will be in quarantine. So it'll mostly be the volunteers at our county facility like they, they do now. Luckily, we've never had that occur. But that's certainly something we can talk to our agent about and make sure that, that there's coverage.
Is there currently an inventory, and by inventory, I mean supplies there that, and if there is, who do they belong to?
I'd have to check into our, our current contract with Animal Allies because it does stipulate exactly who keeps what at the end of a contract. And there are certainly things that they may be able to take with them and then other things that will stay with that, with our current shelter. I don't, I don't think that that's, that kind of wording is identified in the current contract.
I didn't see it there.
Yeah. But it is, it is identified in in our current contract. So I can find that information for you.
So who from the city then is going to be the operational person, the go-to person from your company that if we have a problem or a discussion or a debate or gets beyond that, who in the city, who's your liaison person going to be? Have we established that?
Historically, it's been a number of us. And for example, Frog and I have been involved in contract negotiations. And that's really what my involvement was in prior years. Certainly, I may get a call if there's something that maybe something with air conditioning or the heating unit. And I refer that to Jeff Getzmann. But then I'll be contacted to make sure there's money to make the improvements. So it's really been Finance Director, Public Works Director, and City Attorney. There isn't really one key person. And even Police Department gets involved too because their employee is the one that handles the animals transporting. So there's a number of us that get involved.
Okay. Don't take this personally, okay? I'm sure you won't. But who from the city would go out there and to make sure that the, the building is kept in an operational state? Okay, will somebody from the city do that?
Sure.
On a regular basis? I mean, on a, not just when they're driving by one day, decide to stop in?
Yeah, I would say that would be a public works function.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Olson?
Jean, first of all, thank you for getting this all done. But once we get to the point, you know, we're in the infant stage right now, but whoever gets the contract to actually run the new facility, wouldn't that be part of their operating functions as well, or?
You mean, looking after the building?
Yes.
Yeah, when, when we do the contract, we stipulate what type of repairs will be covered by the city and what type of minor repairs will be covered by the operator. So we get real specific with that, right down to the exact dollar amount of who's responsible for what. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does because the city will own the building. So there'll be certain things that the city, I'm assuming Jack would have to take responsibility of because it's a city-owned building. And then the partnership with HSDC and the operating costs of that facility. I'm just taking a guess at it, but that's, that's how I would think the business plan would work.
That's correct.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, and I think typically, Jean, I think from the old contract, I think this new one, I think mirrors that as far as a major repairs is identified as anything over $500. And then as far as who's going to be operating the new shelter, I believe that's in the contract too, that, that Humane Society of Douglas County will be the, will be the operators.
I don't know that that says that.
I saw it on, I saw it on my email.
Is that, what I sent the revised version, it took out some debt language that seemed premature at this time. And it was some debt language that was likely carrying forward from the Animal Allies contract. And we did discuss whether we should keep it in there or not. So the first version did have that debt language. But the, the issue with that is that when we issued the debt back in 2011, it had the name of the organization, the 501(c)(3) that would be operating the new shelter as Animal Allies. So at some point in our future here, we need to change the name to whoever will be operating this in the long term. And I certainly think that HSDC is, I'm confident that they will be an excellent candidate for running our shelter in the long run, the new shelter.
I thought I saw that, that in there. Maybe, maybe I didn't. Could anybody from HSDC verify that? Okay, okay, okay. That's, yeah, that's good. Thanks.
Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you. One more question. In terms of the workman's comp, I know that city isn't, they're responsible for carrying that. But do we have any, and I see where they have the general liability, we want to cover, we want to make sure there's coverage. Are we also going to make sure there's coverage on workman's comp? Do we get a copy of that? I realize we're not on the hook for that, so to speak, but it would seem to me that the city at least has a somewhat of an obligation to make sure that we have work, that they have. And I'm not suggesting, I don't want to say anything about you not having it, but I'd just like to make sure that they do have it.
I think, I don't think our workers' comp policy because we don't have any city employees, okay, and so I think that's what you're saying. Are you asking if we just verify that they have?
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Okay. Because it didn't state that in here. I think we should get a
Okay, okay.
It did in the general liability, but not in the workman's comp.
Gotcha. We can do that.
Thank you.
Well, if there are no other comments, I think we'll call for the question and put this to a vote. All in favor of 8.1, say aye. Those opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Item 10.1 is a resolution approving the report of the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior regarding the option agreement and development agreement with International Metalics Corporation Incorporated and IMC Holdings LLC.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay, and before we go any further, I believe Jason Cirque wanted to say a few words and also somebody wanted to comment.
Thank you, councilors. I just wanted to recognize a few folks in the audience tonight. Richard Aloka and Dobbiny Cooper from International Metalics Corporation are here tonight. They thought it would be prudent to come to the meeting. They've also, are very good at killing many birds with one stone when they're here. They, they do have a lot of meetings and we met earlier today. Also wanted to introduce some of the team that has been working on this project. It's a very large project. You learned about it in January. About a $900 million project that's slated for Parkland that we continue to move forward on. Andy Leashack from Douglas County Administrators here. Michelle Hosteller from the Development Association. And in the back, Brian Hanson from Apex, as well as Lisa Bodine, who, from Giant Voices, who's been doing some of the work for, for Dobbiny and, and Richard. So just a couple of highlights of what you are looking at tonight and approving. Of course, there's a, there's a small report in there, but tied to that report are an option agreement and a development agreement. The option agreement, at our last redevelopment authority, we agreed, we adopted a resolution that, that put forth a cooperation agreement between Douglas County and the redevelopment authority. That cooperation agreement essentially transfers the property to the redevelopment authority so that we can begin working with International Metalics Corporation on an option agreement as well as a development agreement. The option agreement, if you had a chance to look at it, more or less gives IMC about a two-year option on the Parkland Industrial Park property. There are certain thresholds that need to be met over the next two years. And if those do not be, are not met, we will look to remedy that. And if there's no remedy, then we will sense pull the option and more or less unravel the, more or less unravel the project. I think we've given enough time. We've negotiated those timeframes and, and I have good faith that they are moving forward right now. Couple of things that, that they have been working on is some engineering work as well as their market studies. So they are making good progress. The second thing that's in your, in your, in your agenda tonight is the development agreement. The development agreement is a very slim development agreement. As you, if you had noticed, it does not have any incentives in it at this time. It is more or less an agreement that says redevelopment authority is going to grant you an option. And IMC, you're going to do a couple of these things and it kind of relates to the option agreement. There will be, if we continue to move down this path, there will be some incentives. A $900 million project is going to probably require some tax increment. Also some utility improvements. So as we move, continue to move forward with this project, we will continue to learn more, probably by this fall, to be able to give you an update on where we're at and potentially sooner. So that is essentially what you are approving tonight. I will open it up for a few questions for the gentlemen, if you'd like. If you don't have any questions, that is, that is fine as well. And we'll continue to move forward. Thank you.
Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, I just want to welcome them to the community. So thanks for looking into our community. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Seeing none? All in favor of 10.1, say aye. Anyone opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Item 10.2 is a resolution setting a public hearing for the 2014 consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for May 6th.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Same sign? 10.2 carries.
10.3 is a resolution setting a public hearing for comments on the community development needs and fair housing choice for May 6th.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of 10.3, say aye. Anyone opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
10.4 is a resolution introduced by the Common Council approving a three-year Harvard Development Statement of Intentions for the years 2014 to 17.
It's been moved and seconded twice. So all in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Same sign? 10.4 carries.
11.1 is an ordinance amending the traffic code, Schedule A stops, one and two-way stops by adding East First Street at E Street.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
11.2 is an ordinance amending the traffic code, Schedule E, no parking in designated spaces by adding 1527 Grand Avenue, five feet on either side of Drive five feet on either side of driveway entrance.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. 11-2 also carries.
12.1 is Twinports Lake Fest is requesting the use of 15 picnic tables for their annual community outreach event at Barker's Island on August 2nd. And we have one person signed up to speak.
Okay, and?
Rose Legan.
Hi, I just wanted to thank you very much, Mayor and the council, for approving the picnic tables. I wanted to let you know that our fine city that we have, that we're having close to 2,000 people at our event. We have music, we have food. We also give away non-perishable school supplies, backpacks, diapers and stuff for that, for the community. So I just want to let you know that it's, we have an extension from Duluth that's coming. We have many businesses that support that for the Duluth Superior area. And I just wanted to thank you so much for the use of the picnic tables.
Thank you for saying that. Mary, did you wish to say anything?
The only thing I want to ask the council is to cap the borrowing of picnic tables with this event. Rose has been wonderful to work with. It's a great organization, and they all are. I mean, we're processing some 50 special event permits. Barker's Island is doing exactly what we designed it to do. It's drawing people and events there. But I wouldn't want to see us develop a precedent of loaning our tables out to every event. So I'm hoping if you say yes tonight, that this is the last time you'll say yes, tonight, tonight.
Counselor Dahlbeck, did you want to make a friendly amendment?
Yes, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to, that we do not borrow out tables after this event.
And is that okay with, who had moved and who had seconded? Okay. So is that okay with the original motion and second?
I guess what I would like to see, just the wording a little bit different.
Well, sure, I know, you know, you just got to find, tune everything there, Dan.
Just that we make this request non-precedent-y.
That's right.
Okay.
May I ask just one question? Would that mean that next year, that this opportunity would be bypassed then? Is that what?
I think, I think once the council agrees that your event can receive the tables, we would continue that into the future. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I'm asking them not to say yes 50 times.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Counselor Olson, do you want to restate, since you corrected Counselor Dahlbeck, do you want to restate that with the wording as far as this is not precedence-setting?
Sure. I would make a motion that we approve 12.1 in a fashion that doesn't make this a precedent-setting. Linda, you want to take care of it?
Okay, does everybody understand what Counselor Dahlbeck wants to?
I just want to make it clear that after the last event, that we do not borrow out the tables anymore. That's, I mean, however you want to put it, fine, but we keep borrowing them out. They get broken, I mean, and the city has to haul them. And I mean, I just think this, after this event here, that should be the end.
Counselor Fensel?
I think we should be wary of making this strong language or that serious restriction. There may be other events that occur in our city that we have to do this for. So I think on a case-by-case basis, it's important that we look at each one. But I think we should be critical and not make it precedent-setting. But I think we never know when some major event might come to our city. And, you know, a few picnic tables might stymie a whole, might stop a whole thing that might be very good for our city. So on a case-by-case, we can continue to look at these. But as you said, Ms. Olson, Counselor Olson, we should not make this precedent-setting and not loan them out. Just willy-nilly, we should be careful to protect our property. But who knows what other events will occur?
But how are we going to do that if we just, like you say, willy-nilly? I mean, if you pick somebody and then somebody else comes along and says, hey, you know, you borrowed them out to this one, why can't we have them?
We can always say no.
We're going to have that problem.
We can always say no.
So why not just stop it? Well, the stopping is now.
We'll say no on an individual basis.
Counselor Sweeney, did you want to make a comment on this?
Couldn't, it seemed to me that Mary could make that decision on her own. Why do we have to bring it to the council, decide and vote every time where they're going to put a picnic table? I think she can make the decision.
Mary would...
Yes, Counselor, and I do make the decision often and I say no. So it is certainly the citizen's right to bring it before you to ask for a different decision.
Okay, any other comments before we're voting on? Linda, do you want to try to reread that?
I'm not sure if I know anymore. We're approving this event, but we're going to... Did somebody want to amend the motion to be on a case-by-case basis? Or are we capping it at this?
Case-by-case will be fine.
Right.
So, better state that one more time.
We're going to approve this request and then in the future we'll approve or not approve on a case-by-case request.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
And so that meets the approval of the original motion, the original second? I think we're ready to vote on this. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Thank you.